I'd like to call the meeting to order. I entertain a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem.
So move.
I'd like to move that Greg Bolwood at the second chairman pro tem.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call, Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Figueroa.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman Needham.
All right. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move with assignment, please. Thank you. First thing on the agenda would be mayor's comments. I'd like Yzel Robbins to come up here and give us a quick heads up about this foreclosure prevention that will be presented here at City Hall.
All right, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just wanted to take this opportunity, as we know there are many problems in the city of Waukegan with foreclosures, with the economy being the way that it is, and in conjunction with that, we've been putting forth some additional efforts to try and address this problem, so that the next effort that we have coming up for the public, for the city of Waukegan, and we want to take this opportunity to make this public announcement. On next Monday night at 6:30 PM, we will be having a foreclosure prevention workshop here in the council chambers, and that again is 6:30 PM, January 10th. And certainly, we'd like to encourage people to come out if you're having a problem. Perhaps we will have some presenters, we'll have a representative here from the Attorney General's office, and a person from the Affordable Housing Corporation. We'll also have a legal group here that basically deals with foreclosures and giving people assistance in getting their mortgages rewritten, modified, so this, we hope that this will be helpful for the community. And we'll also have some lenders for persons that might be interested in looking or seeking for a mortgage. Perhaps we have to have some homes available through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, so we would also like to invite persons that might be interested in seeking a mortgage to acquire property. Thank you.
Thank you, Yzel. Next, I'll take, next is audience time, and no one signed up for audience time, so we will move to the minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next thing will be resolutions, proclamations. We have none. Next is committee reports, and Judiciary Committee report. Alderman Figueroa, please.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Judiciary met, committee met last Monday. Can we do a...
Mr. Chair, if I may speak. If I may speak...
Yes, yes. Chairman Alderman Rivera?
If anyone doesn't have any objections on these map amendments, can we do an omnibus on this, if we could, please?
Sure.
As long as there's unanimous viewpoint in that regard, yes, we can. While the words are approved, all these are simply the drafting of ordinances, which will all come back before this council for your deliberation.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Tempest?
Alderman Figueroa, if I may. Items A through S are basically in the sixth ward, I believe, on Genesee Street. I would ask that a unanimous vote be taken from A through S, and that the proper corporate authorities draw up the necessary ordinance to put those in effect.
What about T and U?
B through S. Make that correction.
B through S.
B through S.
B through S, excuse me. Thank you. B.
B through S. And what...
A is on my...
A, T, U, V?
I think B through S would be nice and clear for one.
Okay. I do, no, my only question is V. I thought we had a moratorium on those. Is there...
This is a zoning matter.
Oh, zoning matter, so it's not... It's already there, it's just we read, okay. Never mind then. Never mind. Okay, then, never mind. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that. That's fine. Okay.
Why don't we do A first, then?
All right. Alderman Figueroa.
I'm sorry.
We got off track, I'm sorry. Alderman Figueroa, please.
We're all set now?
Yes. Sorry.
I'm going to do A separately.
Just for A separately, yes. Then let me, we have to do something before we do B through S.
Now, A is a amendment to the existing conditional use permit, reducing the minimum size, store size requirements from 600 feet to 300 square feet at the, at the location 2700 West Belvedere Road. The people in question are here. No, presentations aren't, unless some alderman would like an alderman, a presentation, but they had a thorough presentation at the Judiciary Committee, it passed unanimously. The owners are here, present tonight, and there's a condition, it passed with the consent of, recommendation of staff. So, the Judiciary Committee recommends, an ISO move, that zoning calendar 2305, located at 2700 West Belvedere Road, amendment, this is an existing amendment, and the amendment's made to the conditional use permit, reducing the minimum size from 600 to 300 square feet, be approved.
Motion by Alderman Figueroa, second by Alderman Rivera. Any questions on the motion? This a voice vote? All in favor?
This is, this will have to be a roll call, because there were amendments to the conditional use that already passed in committee, so those commandments, those amendments have already been made.
There'll be a roll call.
But we haven't drafted, we haven't had the ordinance drafted, we need to draft one.
We need to draft one.
Okay, so, all right, then.
Okay.
We have not drafted them?
My understanding, I talked to Russ and Steve, none of these have been drafted yet, so tonight, the vote will be in a sense to draft these ordinance for your next session.
Okay, all right, all right. I apologize, you're right.
All in favor?
Something else is passing. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Corporation Council?
On behalf of the chair, I'll entertain a motion that we use the omnibus procedure to vote upon the Judiciary Committee report, items B through S. Such a motion made by Alderman Tempest.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Rivera.
Voice vote. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote on this, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Again, on behalf of the chair, then I would entertain a motion to approve the drafting of an ordinance, approving these items, which I will briefly read through, since they are set forth in the agenda. Used to be zoning calendar 2308, 603 North Genesee. Map amendment R4 to R3. Zoning calendar 2309, 604 North Genesee. Amendment from R4 to R3. Zoning calendar 2310, 607 North Genesee. Map amendment from R4 to R3. Zoning calendar 2311, 611 North Genesee. Map amendment R4 to R3. Zoning calendar 2312, 613 North Genesee. Amendment from R4 to R3. Zoning calendar 2313, 614 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family residents to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2314, 619 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family residents to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2315, 620 North Genesee. Amendment R4, 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2316, 624 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2317, 625 North Genesee. R4, 1 and 2 family amended to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2318, 628 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2319, 629 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2320, 633 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2321, 638 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2323, 710 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2324, 714 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. Zoning calendar 2325, 719 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family. And lastly, zoning calendar 2326, 720 North Genesee. Amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to R3, single family.
We need a motion to approve all that. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Now we'll move on to T. Alderman Figueroa?
Thank you. The item T, Judiciary Committee met and recommended approval for zoning calendar 2327, located at 1022 10th Street. It's a map amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family residential, to B2, community shopping. This is a piece of property that was incorrectly put on the map as R4, and it is commercial or community shopping, so we'd like just, this would be a correction. So it's a recommend to, the motion should read to write an ordinance amending the, making the map amendment.
Motion by Alderman Figueroa, second by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Next, item U is the approved zoning calendar 2328, located on the east side of Thaxter Avenue. It's a map amendment from R4, 1 and 2 family, to B3, general commercial. Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move that the ordinance be written, making that map amendment from R4 to B3 for that property.
So move. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Newsome. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Carried. Last item is to approve zoning calendar 2329, located at 3024 West Belvedere Road. It's a conditional use permit for a payday loan establishment. This business was existing, it's an existing business, and it changed hands, so we have to do a conditional for the new owner. So the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to approve zoning calendar 2329, located at 3024 West Belvedere Street. It's in the ninth ward. It's a conditional use permit for payday loan establishment.
So move. Motion by Alderman Figueroa, second by Alderman Larson. Any question, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We'll move on now to Labor Relations Committee. See, the mayor's the chairman of that, and he's not here. I'm the vice chair, I'll take this one. Only is A, recommendation to approve offering of a voluntary separation plan as presented that was given to all of you in a packet. It's pretty much the same one that we offered last year. I'll take a motion for that. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any questions on it? That'd be a roll call vote.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Passed. Old Business. Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to award the bid for two truck bodies to the lowest qualified bidder, Monroe Truck Company of Monroe, Wisconsin, held over by Alderman Rivera. Alderman Rivera, are we ready to move on this? Or no?
Well, first of all, just to let everyone know that, you know, we did go through, you know, the finance department, and it was approved, so we have the go-ahead to go with it. So, yes, we can go ahead.
Motion by Alderman Rivera. Who's the co-chair of that? Second by Alderman Larson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
B, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Cunningham, to award the bid for one new stump cutter to the low-qualified bidder, Vermeer Midwest and Company of Aurora, Illinois, held over by Alderman Rivera. Alderman Rivera, are we ready to move on that?
Yeah, we can move on it. Again, you know, we communicated with our finances, and it's there, and it's approved, and let's go, let's go on with it.
I guess we don't need a motion, a second, it's already there. That's my fault on the last one. So, roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
And C?
Item C was tabled.
Yes.
I would like to move, Mr. Chairman, that there's some questions. The ordinance was before us last week. Alderman Larson says it wasn't the way it's supposed to be. There are some things that have been added, some things that were never thoroughly discussed in committee.
Okay.
And I'd like to see that taken off the table and referred back to the Judiciary Committee for further review and clarification.
All right, how do we do that? Do we have to make a motion to do that, or can we just do it?
I would like to keep it tabled until the final ordinance is drafted. There was no, nothing added to this, that we wasn't discussed thoroughly in committee, and it's just the final draft of the ordinance has not been presented to us. There's no reason to change it.
My point of order, the final draft was presented to you. It was very clear, there are going to be curbs, there are going to be gutters, there are going to be sidewalks, and that was the ordinance, that was before us last week, and you had questions in regard to that. So I thought it was best we go back to committee and discuss all those items, because we never did get it clarified in committee exactly what we felt as a committee should do. I have strong feelings on it, and you do too, and we need to go to committee to really have it clarified, because the ordinance that was before us last week did say sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
The ordinance was...
Instead that, Alderman, that's exactly what I had before me.
This ordinance that was presented to us was mistakenly presented to us.
I don't know if it's mistaken.
I do know that, because we passed this in committee unanimously, and we talked about this thoroughly at the council level. The ordinance that came out of our building department was incorrectly presented to us, and that's why it was tabled, so it can be corrected and presented to us.
Well, I would like it to go back to committee, so we can evaluate each side. If it was not properly done in committee, all those items were not looked into, it has to come out. Just because an alderman says he don't want this, I think the city needs standards, and we need to keep our standards with curb, gutters, and sidewalks. And if we don't want to keep our standards, you're going to get rat-paddy developments within the city that are really poor. Now, if this is what you care to give, fine. If not what I want to do as an alderman, or what I feel I should do. I assure you, you've got to maintain your standards in this community. And I would ask, that'd be, go back to committee, so we can look at it, and if it comes out of committee, and if the vote, one vote against it, fine, I can live with that. But I will ask that it goes back to committee, so it's done correctly, and I'd like to see the tapes on that committee to see that I'm correct.
What committee did it come out of, Alderman?
Judiciary.
Came out of judiciary.
Judiciary.
The recommendations that came in the ordinance that was presented was not what was approved in committee, or recommended by staff. That came out of Corporation Council. Do we...
It doesn't sound like it's ready to be voted on.
The staff and Corporation Council need to get together.
You do not have an ordinance before us to look at right now? It's not there?
It was tabled.
You had one last week?
For corrections.
Well, it's not here. It's not here. And I ask that it goes back to committee, you can discuss it very well there, you can see what the standard should be, and if you're satisfied with that kind of development in your ward, shame on you, Alderman, shame on you.
Alderman Larson?
Alderman Tempest apparently doesn't approve of the democratic process, that this subdivision went...
This alderman believes in standards.
Let me finish, Alderman Tempest.
Well, we'll try.
Alderman Tempest, please.
The committees, Judiciary Committee thoroughly reviewed it and vetted it.
No.
This was with recommendations from staff that for some reason weren't brought forward for approval at the last Judiciary Committee. Therefore, rather than holding it over, it was tabled to give the staff and the Corporation Council time to draft a proper ordinance that reflects the wishes and desires of the city council, including this alderman. This subdivision is in the eighth ward, and I believe that it is a wonderful subdivision that does not review, need a partisan approach to, to move forward in Waukegan when good quality development is desperately needed, and I would request that this be tabled, as we had said in the last committee meeting, until that ordinance is presented to us. That's all. There's nothing more to it than that.
My motion was...
Wait, gentlemen, gentlemen.
My motion was to refer it back to committee.
Gentlemen.
That was my motion. If I have a second, fine.
We'll get to that in just a moment, Alderman Tempest. Corporation Council, please.
Just in terms of the parliamentary process, Alderman Tempest has made a motion to refer it back to committee. That motion, if it's seconded, it will be the motion of priority to be voted on first. We can't table again, because the motion to table means it can be taken up again in the same council meeting, or in the subsequent council meeting. And since this was tabled, it comes up again at this meeting, but it wouldn't, if we were to, I don't think we can table it again. But there are a variety of options. If Alderman Tempest's suggestion that it go back to committee is not what the council desires, this can matter can be continued to another meeting for further discussion and determination. It can be postponed indefinitely. There's a variety of motions that could be made to affect, I think, what you'd like to do in terms of delaying it until some clarity is obtained. My own office, I just discovered, is itself somewhat confused about what exactly the ordinance should say regarding curbs, or lack thereof, sidewalks, et cetera. So I do think we probably need to delay this in some fashion. Alderman Tempest's motion to refer it back to committee is the one on the table. If there's not a second, then someone else could make a motion.
I will go ahead and second that motion, Alderman Tempest.
Thank you.
And just for the reason that we need to get Corporation Council, staff, and Public Works, was the one, I believe, approved, if I'm not correct, having a ribbon, curb, put in to protect the pavement. And I go back to a contractor, and I know, I'm with you on standards. We have a contractor over here on Jackson Street that Alderman Cunningham and I keep bringing up every time we talk about standards. Nice homes, and here we are, we make it, made him put in curbs and gutters and sidewalks, and to, but that's in the middle of town, all right. I understand. We have to deal both, not only with city standards, but with contractors that want to come in and develop, bring up the tax base, build nice homes, and this contractor does. I won't mention names, but all the contractors that we approve in the city do nice work, because we have a good inspection department. But the point is, we have to balance the standards, and we also have to look at what we're approving here. So let's send it back to committee, look at Corporation Council, our staff, get together, and bring forth a, send a finished ordinance back to committee, so that between staff, as recommended, and we can, we can deal with. I don't think anything's going to be happening right now. Ground is frozen, he's not going to be digging any foundations, so we can delay it another couple weeks. It's been delayed for a couple years now. Another couple weeks is not going to, not going to hurt him.
Then we'll take a, we'll take a, since that seems, since table is not an option, we already have a, we have a motion and a second, we will take a vote on the question. Let's have a roll call.
Alderman Larson?
I'll vote yes, because the chairman of the Judiciary Committee understands the intent and why we were tabling this ordinance in the first place, just so it could be correctly written. There was nothing more to it than that. So I say yes. Let's get it written and present it again.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I vote aye, but I'd like to explain my vote. It's very important that I do. In committee, at one time, the man didn't even want to put curbs in. Did not even want curbs. Nice rural look. How do you hold the road together? Then it came by, decided to put cement in there for curbs. That part never came back to committee. It just was kind of added. And further south, curbs and gutters, sidewalks, another area, curbs, sides, it should be done right. It should be done right. The idea, I'm in charge of this area, and if I say it's okay, it's okay, that's not good. Take a look at west of Lake Hurst. That was Town and Country 1, 2, and 3. Durkin wanted smaller lots. I told weakling him, maintain your standards. It's important that we maintain our standards. And we did, and we got a nice little subdivision with nice-sized lots. I tell you on this one, going back to committee, maintain our standards. And I think we need to discuss it again, we don't need to discuss it here, but I'm a battler for what I believe for my city, and I don't think we should lower our standards. I really don't. And thank you for referring it back to committee, we'll have some good discussion there.
All right. Next is communications. We have none. Next is new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council. A, approve payroll dated December the 28th, 2010, in the amount of $1,336,014.52. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Bills, says none.
None.[1740.11]
Ordinance and resolutions, none. We will move into Alderman's time now, and after Alderman's time, we will have a brief executive session, I hope so, on pending and intimate litigation and settlement of claims. What Alderman is up first?
Larson.
Alderman Larson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year, everybody. In reflecting over the last year and the events we've all participated in, I think I alluded to this before the holidays, but I would, I just want to offer a heartfelt thanks to all the many fine Waukegan citizens who contribute to the betterment of this town. And I look forward to hearing from you in 2011. We'll get through this year. I have to say that the rebooting of the operation of a city, whether it's Waukegan, whether it's Chicago, whether it's New York, whether it's Schaumburg or Naperville, this process is complicated. There's no clear path to how to make cities run in the climate we are all now facing. But one thing I do know is that the many fine citizens of Waukegan that contribute their time and their thoughts and their energies to help make us wiser is appreciated by this Alderman. And I pledge to listen and react and to do whatever I can to get through these tough times and get us back on the path to the greatness I know this city has in its reach.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you.
Thank you. I too am looking forward. I just want to, again, you know, these past few months is definitely, it's been very difficult, not only for, for us, you know, the Alderman, the, but for the staff as well and for everyone that works hard to make this city work. I'm looking forward to the upcoming budgetary talks that we're going to be having. I think we have about five or four, five, six meetings scheduled, and I'm very looking forward to that. My commitment will always be to, first of all, to listen, to try to put the, not only for the best interest of the city, but also for the best interest, especially for my constituents in the 9th Ward. Again, I was very proud to hear what they had to say, but listening is, is part of this position, no question about it. But I'm looking forward to working with the Alderman, working with the administration, the staff, to do the best we can, you know, to make things work in our, in our beautiful city. I love this city, and I'll do the best I can. Also, I want to give my condolences to a dear friend of mine, I think a dear friend of a lot of all the Alderman up here, Jesse Almanzo, who I've known for, since I was a little, little guy, trying to participate in sports with them in pickup games. They were about five years older than I was. But Jesse was a great Waukeganite, grew up in this town, they had a great family, and I wish them the, I wish them my sincere condolences. We lost a great person in the city of Waukegan. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you. Again, echoing what Alderman Larson said, Happy New Year to everybody, and I hope everyone's has started off well. I will caution everyone, the real cold season's coming up, so be mindful of our, of our neighbors, particularly those, some of our seniors who live alone, check in on them. If not, think, Mr. Chief, we have a process in place where we can call and do a courtesy check. Do we do that for, for citizens? Yes, so we can do those. So, please be mindful of that. Something that was very disturbing to me when the snow fell, it had nothing to do with our Public Works Department. They did a great job, of course, but as, you know, we're trying to clear up the city, you know, I still notice a lot of people not moving those cars. People just, cars are sitting there two and three days. You know, Public Works comes through the first time to, you know, to clear the streets. The third and fourth time, once it stops, we're really trying to get this snow to the, to the, to the curb. We can't do that if vehicles are still there. I'm making phone calls to the police department of putting tickets. I don't know if we need to put something in place. I really think we do. For those cars that are moved, that are not moved within a 24, if not 48-hour time period, we need to move them vehicles. You know, just to sit them there, it's, it's very frustrating, extremely frustrating, particularly for those who are calling and asking, when are they going to come? When are they going to come? But it's tough to come when you're in that huge truck and trying to clean the snow. So, please, please, whatever you do, move those cars. You know, some of us, you have off-street parking. You know, we hate to put in snow routes, snow routes for everything, but if, if you can't move these vehicles in a timely fashion, I have no problem. It's on my street. I have no problem doing that, none whatsoever. Get them moved, because you'd be the first one complaining to us that no one has been down your street and clearing, and clearing up their snow. I think we had within a 12-hour time period, seven, eight inches of snow. That's a lot, 10 inches, 12 inches, I'm sorry. 12 inches of snow within a 12 hour, that's a lot of snow to be moving and trying to get it clean when you got vehicles that are sitting there for 48, you know, 72 hours. So, I know, I'm looking for that as we move forward to this, this winter period. If it doesn't get better, snow routes on everywhere, particularly those with driveways. Put them in there. Move, all we need is one day. I'm not trying to complain, but these are part of maintenance things that we all need to be a part of if you want this city to look better. Again, Happy New Year to everybody. I wish everybody a great prosperous New Year, and I am looking forward to these Budgets Talk, Tina. So, whatever we're going to do, let's do it and have some fun doing it. Thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to say Happy New Year, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice holiday season. Now that we're through it, it's time, like a couple of Aldermen said, got to get down to work. There's some things that got to be done. It's definitely going to be a challenging year, but I think we'll get through it. I also would like to offer my condolences to the Almanzo family. Jesse was a great guy. Anybody that played ball over the last 20 years in Waukegan knew Jesse. He's got, had to slow down a little bit a few years back when he had a slight accident, but it was always good to see him out, and I'm extending my condolences. I'm very sorry to see that he's passed. That's all. Thank you.
Alderman Moisio.
Yeah, my condolences also to the Almanzo family. They live in the 3rd Ward, and anybody that lived in Waukegan long enough knows that they were Waukegan people through and through, always cared about Waukegan, and my condolences out to them. Alderman Cunningham, I agree with you on that. We've, we've talked about this a couple of times since we've been up here, but just go to no parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Other, Gurney's got it. I think Zion has it. Other places have it. We could do that. We've batted it around back and forth. I know we have some areas, we'd have some contingencies and some hardship cases that they don't have. I mean, they have to park on the street, we know that, but I think we need to revisit that. We've talked about it. You talk about it every time it snows. I know your ward is particularly a problem down there, but we could, we could revisit that again, about that, to try to alleviate some of that, it would help. And again, I appreciate everybody that came out to the last meeting to voice their opinion. That's what democracy's all about. You don't have to stop at that last meeting. You can, at least for me, you can call me. Any suggestion is, is okay because in these times, you don't know who could come up with a good suggestion on how to, how to do something to try to make things work a little bit better. So, any, any suggestion is, is welcomed. And then we'll bring that to staff. They're the experts, and we run it by the brains of the operation. If they say it saves money or, or helps us out, then we go with it. If they say it doesn't, then we have to try to find something else. So, I encourage the citizens of Waukegan to contact their Alderman and give as many suggestions as they can on how we can try to make things work a little bit better because that's what we have to try to do. There's no other way. I don't, I don't see any help coming from anywhere except ourselves. So, we're going to have to do what we have to do. That's it.
Alderman Figueroa.
Yes, I just would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, happy and prosperous New Year. You know, with the economy the way it is, many of the people that I talk to, first thing that comes out of their mouth is about, is about jobs and the economy. We've had some, some good news in the last couple of days, if you've been listening to, to the news, but it's going to, it's not going to happen overnight. We have to prepare ourselves for the new economy and get the ball rolling, work together to bring jobs to Waukegan. So, Happy and prosperous New Year and a healthy New Year to everybody. That's it.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to announce that the Waukegan Township Park Place is presenting a Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Dreamers Breakfast. It's going to be Saturday, January 15th, 2011, at 9:00 a.m. It's going to be held at the Bonnie Brook Clubhouse, and the tickets are $8 per person, and they can be bought at the supervisor's office, 149 South Genesee Street, or at Park Place, 414 South Lewis Avenue. And I also like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, prosperous New Year. We have a lot of work ahead of us, as the Alderman have stated, and, but I think we're up for the task, and I believe things will turn around for us in this community. I have faith to believe that if we work together, we'll get through this. And I just see brightness ahead of us, I really do. And I know that if we work together, this too shall pass. That's all.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Just want to start out with the idea of resident parking. Alderman Moisio touched on it, but it sent off a spark plug in my head. We presently have a law in the city of Waukegan, and 75% of residents don't even know about it. If you are not a resident of the city of Waukegan and do not have a vehicle tag or your license plates do not check out to Waukegan, and you park overnight, even though you're on the correct side, you can be given a ticket for parking on Waukegan streets and not having license plates registered in Waukegan and a vehicle sticker. If you don't have a vehicle sticker, you can still get one for, if you're a city resident. But if you're not a city resident and you came to visit somebody for the weekend and you parked in front of their house instead of their driveway, you can be given a ticket. Now, I'm looking for signs to tell me about this, you know, no parking, boy, I understand that. Come into Waukegan, I see a sign, no parking, odd-even parking, in effect, okay? But I'm looking for that sign that tells me if I'm not a resident that I, I can't park on the streets. It's kind of scary. I think we need to revisit that in committee, in the police committee. I think it's a serious matter. We need to really look into it. Or you people watching out there, gosh, if you have some come visit you, have them park in your driveway and you park on the street, if you have a vehicle sticker. I hope you do. The other one I want to talk, I want to thank the staff for their, tonight, we had item B through S on Genesee Street, rezoning that all down to single-family. I want to thank Steve, Russ, and the staff up there for their hard work, Noel, for the hard work you did getting that going. It's been a long adventure, but we finally got it on the way tonight. And then, lastly, gee, nobody mentioned it, but you know, as I drive around the city, of course, I took mine down today, but I like to come, not holiday lights, I like to come Christmas lights, Christmas lights. And you know, pretty good display in the city this year, really. People, lighting people's spirit up and show, hey, we can bounce back, we will. And it was kind of nice to see all the displays in the city, and I really appreciate seeing all that being displayed. I know the other citizens do too. And I want to thank you all that did take time to, to put your Christmas lights up. Okay, and thank you very much, and I wish you all a prosperous and Happy New Year. Mine are down already. Mine are down. I took them down today.
With that, I will take a motion, not to adjourn, I wish, a motion to go to executive accession by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Figueroa. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Alderman Rivera.
Discuss pending litigation, imminent litigation and settlement of claims, the same thing, all the-
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
And when we come out, there will be no other action items. There will just be an adjournment. Thank you for coming.
Steve?
Can I have two minutes?
Steve?
Yeah. Two minutes, we'll be back there.
Steve.
Jesus. You may be poor, lady, but you look as too little. We are a mess.
Boy, things are moving fast.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. All right, we're adjourned.